All right, can we do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dan Han.
Present.
Councilmember Cox.
Present.
Councilmember Stubble.
Present.
Councilmember Josh Han. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Josh Han is running late. He anticipated being here around 6:30 or so, but. And Mayor White.
Present. Thank you. Before we get going with approval of agenda, nice to have some folks in the audience. Thanks for being here. A couple of things, please, for, well, for all of us, including audience members. If you got one of these with you, please make sure the it's, the ringer is off. And if during the meeting, you need to have any kind of conversation, even a whisper with someone you're here at the meeting with, please know that sound travels and it's pretty disruptive for that. So please feel free to not feel free to, please excuse yourself and go out into the hallway. And also know there's a really weird sound travel from the hallway in. So get well away from the door to have your conversation or it tends to float in. We would appreciate that. Yeah, and with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
It's second.
Great, so moved by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Larson. I don't think there's any need for amendments to it. So call for the question, starting with you, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 All right. All right, the next action item, the best one on the whole agenda tonight. Adam will administer the oath of office and swear in Chad Cassidy. Yep. Well, I'll move out of the way. We're not hard on the photo scene. Oh, putting this stuff there, okay. Paperwork's not official till you sign it. All right. Welcome, Councilmember Cassidy. All right, with that, we will move to the public hearing on the utility rate increase. Opening public hearing at 6:04. So Lance, are you doing the introduction and reading or is that? Or is that going to fall to Rochelle? Or at least give the overview of it.
So as you guys all remember, when we went to SLIB with our original projects, they were at 45 million. When they came back to us, they were at 89 million. So most projects increased by 47%. So when we had the rate study done, when they did it, they figured those costs originally that we had at the 7% increase. But having looked at what these costs are gonna, what these are going to cost us now is why we changed it to be 9%. And we put that in then for the next five years to keep it at 9% so that we'll be able to afford the loan payments on these when they come due the year after we close a project.
Okay, so you're proposing 9% for the next five years. I think the original was 7% for 9%.
Yes, and that's what we advertised was a 7%. That's what we took to SLIB. That's how we were able to get approved for that amount was because we also had to show that we would increase our rates every year to cover the debt service on it. That's why we went with the 9% so that when we do go back to them, we can show that the change that it made between the two, because we'll probably, we'll have to go back if we want to be able to do all these projects because we will run out of money before we finish all the projects.
Okay, council, any questions before we open up for a public comment? Before.
Mayor, if I may, no questions, but if I could provide, I think, some commentary on it.
Please.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I would say, never comfortable for us when we think about rate increases. But this one, I think, is deeply necessary for us to pay our way. This is going straight into capital improvements that will benefit a huge array of users in Lander across our community. Our water mains are not just aging, they're incredibly aged, right? Like we have 30 to 40-year on average water mains. So I'm much more comfortable just knowing it's going directly into that capital improvement to benefit a whole lot of our residents and our citizens. We have an extensive relief program for folks who are in income categories where this might be difficult for them and this rate increase might challenge their spending in their home budgets. And so I know we'll continue to advertise the availability of that program. And I hope we see people take us up on it as well. These rates are also contingent on consumption. So for folks where it's uncomfortable, but they need to figure out ways to manage it, you know, this is based on what you're using. And so it can be mediated to some degree by reducing consumption for those who have that flexibility in their usage. It's it's about providing reliability for us, honestly, and in a state where we benefit from low tax rates and get our taxes or our services paid for by a lot of other entities, largely large industry, this is a place for our citizens and for us to pay our way. And when the state now comes to us and we ask for loans and we ask for grants and help into the infrastructure and they say, are you paying your own way or your citizens, you know, are you having rate increases? Are you helping out here? We can say yes. And we're one of the few towns that hasn't been able to say that with consistency for a long time. And so I think this will help us make our case when we ask for help that we're helping ourselves. So thank you, Mayor. I'll be in favor of this increase, even though I understand it will be uncomfortable for some.
Thank you for those comments and agreed. I know no one wants to have their rates go up for really anything. But I'll also note, infrastructure improvements were one of our, not one of, it was the highest request from our master plan residents and ourselves. So it seems prudent to do that. And I will also say thank you to staff for the ways that you've kept our prices down. So, you know, again, with a $13 million water tank, I think we paid less than $150,000 on that. Is that correct, Lance? Our rates would be substantially higher if we didn't have that. Likewise, the grant funding for the water meter, our individual water meter replacement, so thank you for that.
I do have a comment.
Councilmember Cox.
Thank you, Mayor. I can appreciate all of that, too. My concern is this increased cost from 45 million to 89 million that then impacts. So my question is, as we look to the long term and we know that we have some deferred maintenance, we've talked a lot about that and the necessity to upgrade. What is our ceiling? Because, I mean, you can only do this so many times. This seems, that's a jump. And that's a lot more money, a lot more impact to our community. So my concern would be the next ask, if you will.
I'd be happy to take that. I guess we'll just talk about having to pay for things that you own and to replace them, you know, at your household or whatever it may be, as those go up. And you have to budget, you have to figure out how you're going to pay for them. We've been lucky enough, the state's been providing in transmission mains and then through some of their projects, 66% funding, they've backed that off to 50% funding. They're telling you locally to find solutions to pay for your own infrastructure. Those taxes that they're not collecting locally, that's going to fall on your shoulders to find solutions or reach failure. And so that's where you're at. As your infrastructure ages, you choose either to find the money and pay for it, but there's no magic pot of money to dip into to replace infrastructure and keep it up. You're lucky you're biting off some of the big components of your infrastructure, but you have a lot of distribution lines out there that need to be replaced. And that has a dollar price per foot to put that back in the ground and to keep up with your infrastructure. You're still dealing with that deferred maintenance plan that you inherited. But really, if you were paying for this one for one, you would be setting your water rates and sewer rates to recover your capital to pay for your projects.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Lance. That's a good explanation, summary. I just, how do we, is there, I mean, the cost is driving up so much that a nine, I mean, even a 9% increase doesn't really address that increase from the 45 to the 89. So I'm just, I'm curious. My concern would be that next year it's going to be double and then we're going to be at 160 mil, you know.
Sure. I think your inflation is looking just like that. We talked to the county today, they've folded most of their projects. White Dot has been, White Dot is folding a lot of their projects. They have very little going into their STIP planning. What's happening around the state is less construction with dollars that aren't there. So the reality being either you find money and you replace projects, you move forward with infrastructure or you stop and you do a repair plan and you react. And, you know, we can run around repairing what's breaking in the ground, but you're also never going to get ahead in that plan either. So it's a tough choice. I get what you're saying is, as things inflate, how do you pay for them? And these, you know, other municipalities have doubled their rates around the state. And so that's scary. I mean, that's Rawlins right now, if you call them, to replace their infrastructure and to figure out what their capital is. They're significantly increasing these direct costs to recover their capital to pay for projects. Those are things like wooden water lines that they're replacing there. So you've got a decent plan that you're trying to fund and you're missing a significant amount of money that, you know, there is a plan with loan forgiveness. And as long as that exists, we'll keep trying with staff to pair this with other funds and other grants that we're eligible for and see what's available. But we've continued to try to lower that cost through creative thinking or state grants or federal grants. But the reality being that that rate increase is going to be based on opportunity and we don't want any more money than we need. But right now, you're significantly short to pay for what you want to do.
Councilman Dan Han.
That pretty much, she basically said what I was going to say. I just, I think the citizens of Lander feel like they've been let down because we sold the, what, eight years at 7% and possibly going down after that. And now we're, now we're at 9% for five years. And we've only been a year and a half into the, into the raise. So I'm like, my counterpart here that, yeah, I just see it going up. And I'm, and where do we, where do we, where do we slow things down to, you know, before we totally stress everybody out with the bills? I mean, that's, that's, where's that, where's that number? Or are we even thinking about that? I mean, there are people that are really concerned with, with the rates, so. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Shari.
I want to remind you, though, for as far as financing, we will only be financing about 32 million because we will get debt forgiveness on the other portion of it. To answer your question about when is enough enough, when these payments start, we'll just be, we'll just be ready to finish the, right now, we have $500,000 in loan payments, in current loans that we have right now. We'll be finishing those off as these come due. So what, that money will be repurposed. Of course, the payments will be larger. That's why we're increasing these because the projects are a little larger in size. But I would think within five years, you'll probably be maxed where you'll have to hold off on projects because your debt service will be so high. My personal opinion, I won't prepare, but.
You never miss a chance to share that with us, Shari. Yeah, I think, Councilmember Han, you bring up a good question and I have two thoughts in response to that. One is, you know, last year, we worked really hard to revamp our discounted water and sewer rates for our residents. And I think it's important for us to continue to share that information, especially with those who are cost sensitive and encourage them to apply. Right now, I asked Danielle, who oversees that at the front desk there, and I can't remember, it was 42 or 48 customers that are currently doing that. And we have 3,500 taps roughly. So it's a fairly low use right now for that program. And it does start at 133% of federal poverty level. So and that's a 50% discount for it. So that is available. And the second part, which I, my conversations with folks, and I think this is one of our obligations as council members, is we need to be able to provide those facts to our constituents. Folks do have concerns about that and say, what, you know, why isn't my street going to be done? And when we, we note the price tag and inform folks of that, virtually everyone that I've spoken to with that is like, oh, I had no idea. And their anxiety goes from sky high to a much lower level. There's still the long-term concerns, for sure. But I think that it's our obligation to have those uncomfortable conversations with our constituents and, you know, sharing, here's where we're at. You know, costs have gone up, we can't control that. So, and water, you know, again, water and water sewer and streets are linked together and are the number one concern. So. Any other thoughts or questions from council before opening it up?
Mayor, one more addition, if I may. I neglected to mention some numbers that I was curious about when I was first looking into, how comfortable would I be with going from 7% to 9%? So if there's difference, of course, in our different households, their consumption, their meter size. But if you look at an average 2,000 a gallon a month households, the difference in cost here will be $5 a month on average, up to $10 a month in the summer when you're using a heck of a lot more water for beautification of your lawns and vegetable gardens. So $5 a month, you know, for, let's say, eight months of the year, $10 a month increase for the summer months. It's, I think it's manageable for a lot of households to be able to accommodate that expense. Now, expenses are going up across the board. We know electricity rates are going up. We, you know, just buying your groceries is a whole lot more these days. And so I hope that Councilman Han hears your concern that citizens are going to say, what, when does it stop? How much more increasing is going to happen? That they can also understand that what we're facing, the cost of the goods we need to replace the infrastructure, there's an incredible amount of volatility and increase out there for us as well. So to provide the service of reliable water for the future, for our current, for our future needs, we need to do some investments now. It'd be different if we had mains that were 20 years old instead, if this had been looked at, you know, a couple of decades ago, but it wasn't. So it's a perhaps an unlucky time for us to be at a time of deep volatility in the cost of services and goods, at the same time that we have critical infrastructure problems because we haven't replaced them for decades. Not a great place to be, but I think the solution in front of us is modest re-increases to pay our way, continue to access that creative funding and financing that we have through the state and do as much construction as we can before, you know, we, we can no longer do it, I guess. We were hoping for nine projects through that SLIB funding, we're going to maybe get five or six. It's more than we would have without it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Councilman Larson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, I, the people that I've talked to, they don't feel like they've been sold down the river or been sold to build the goods. They, they understand, they see the economy and, and what's going on there. And, you know, here is the Lander City Council. We don't hold much sway with what happens worldwide, nationwide and everything else. You know, they recognize that those things happen. Is it something that they love? Absolutely not, you know, but you know, it is what it is and we, we'll deal with it for as long as we can until, until we can't, you know. That's just kind of where we're at. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Cox.
Thank you, Mayor. And Shari, this is a question for you, just so I can wrap my head around this. When we're collecting these fees, essentially, we're using those yearly fees collected to pay our debt, if you will. Okay. So as you say that.
I actually, I put them aside, I put them aside so that when the loan payments come due, I can pay the interest because they charge you interest from every draw that you take so that we're not capitalizing the interest when we take this loan into the final stage. So we have that money set aside. I also want to remind you that 15% of all these projects, we take money out of the optional tax to pay for those. So the importance of keeping the optional tax is huge for the city in order to be able to go after these funds because we have to show a match money and they don't pay for streets, curbs, or gutters.
Okay, thank you.
Great. See no more from council? I'd like to open up for a public comment. If you come to the microphone and the one at the podium, and you have three minutes. Oh, we need to make sure that's on. Well, welcome. We're friendly scouts honor. Oh, I'm sorry. Test, test.
Hi, I am, my name's Nikki Baker. And I, my husband and I own BioWater, which is one of the potable water delivering companies here in town. And so I hear a lot about like the infrastructure of the city of Lander and the residential customers, but it's not really addressing those rural customers that have to buy, you know, that pay us to, that we have to buy that water and then go deliver to them. So our, my question is, is we're raising, you know, this 9% for wastewater and infrastructure in the town, but it seems like those residents or the rural customers are still getting charged that same amount. But they're not getting the wastewater and all those other things. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, would that increase be the same for those rural customers or not? Because we have to, unfortunately, we've only had the company about two years and we've had to pass on, you know, raised prices two years row, which isn't good for a new company and it's hard to do that. So that's kind of, I guess, my big question to you guys. Would that, would the fill station be also 9% as well? Even though they're not, we're not using the wastewater and, you know, the, all the rest of that in town.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know if you can answer questions or I can just talk.
Yeah, think again for, for this.
And so water and sewer rates are separate and we keep them separate. So the 9%, if you're a city customer, you actually get a bill for water and a bill for sewer, which both increased 9%. And so the 9% on the water side, there's no sewer bill going with it, but it is still a 9% adjustment.
So it's actually like 18% for people in town, then?
No, it doesn't, it's nine and nine because their sewer usage is based off of their lowest two. And so they, they get an average bill that accompanies their water bill.
Thank you for, I didn't realize that. My, also, my other thing is that we tend to kind of like do our residents, like we want to charge them, but there seems like we do a lot of stuff for people that come out of town. Like we have free camping. Like I feel like there might be some other ways to kind of get some income. They use our services up there, you know, it's a great, great to have, but why not start trying to do some sort of charging for camping at City Park, get some income from there. Also, our trailer dump site up there, no one pays for that. That's all free. People use the water out of that hose. My husband sees them and fills them, even though it's not potable, they're still filling up their water for their campers. They're using that water to rinse out their hoses. And we're also, we'll see people go and fill up at the city offices up there by the water station, too. So I feel like there might be some other ways to kind of regulate some water and have some other people pay for it rather than just the customers, residential and rural, that, you know, have to pay for the water. So I feel like sometimes there's an imbalance there of who's paying for what. So, I think that's all I have.
Thanks. Thanks for coming. One thing I might add, for some of your customers, they're not directly paying into wastewater, but at some point their septic is getting, you know, vacuumed and then that comes to, still is managed by the city for that. So, I mean, not quite the same, obviously, with the pipes and whatnot, but they still are serviced in a, in a different way by the wastewater. But I appreciate you coming and, and I don't mean that in a defensive way, but as a way to explain to your customers that there's a delayed response before they use our sewer system.
And you guys were saying 9% for the next five years, so $1.40 this year for 1,000 gallons and another.
Admittedly, that's, that's knock on wood, but, you know, none of us have crystal ball. So, you know, if inflation continues at this pace, that might not be sufficient. But let's, let's, you know, wait to see where things are at next year. But that could be the plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? Yes, please.
Hi Karen, what's a Lander? I too am concerned about the 47% increase from what you guys were quoted. The infrastructure has been aging for years. And it's just now that we're going to go ahead and the city, I guess, agreed on 7% in the past and now you're going to raise it to 9%. In my opinion, I think the city, and this is just my opinion, why doesn't the city try cutting a little bit of money elsewhere instead of raising rates to the citizens? Possibly things like extra administrative help that you've hired on in the past few years. I know a lot of them are making huge salaries, 80, $90,000 a year with benefits. That adds a lot. We're not that large of a city and I don't understand why we would need to have administrative assistance for administrative assistance for administrative assistance. I live on social security and I pay a flat rate for my water. I usually use only one half of the allotted amount. So for me, the raise increases is really silly because I'm not using all of the water I'm allotted in the first place. I'm paying $60 a month, 62 and change a month. And I'm only using, the last time I checked was probably around 1,800 or less gallons per month. So this makes a big difference to me. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for speaking. Anyone else to come forward? Okay, see none, oh.
Wade Alexander. Question, are you going to raise commercial 9% too? Straight across? So over there at my Garfield property, I bet I don't use 100 gallons. Can you deduct it? I'm paying commercial and I'm not even in there. You know, I think that the rate increase is fine, but if you're not using a building, I got a bathroom in there, but I'm not in there because we don't have that shopping. Yeah, I don't want it disconnected, but I don't want to do that, but I don't want to pay 60 bucks to go to the bathroom. If I'm down there once, you know.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, a lot of times I don't even go in there. I've been gone all winter, haven't went in there at all. But I think you need to raise it for everybody in the city. You got to do these projects and the only way you're going to do it is to raise the rates. Five bucks is nothing. It's, that's minimal for what you guys are getting. I commend you to go and after that money. And like I say, five to 10 bucks. Anybody that complains should go somewhere else, see what an increase would be. It's minimal in Lander. Kudos.
You know, the council, when we had the water rate study done the first time and you, Dan was on when Carl Brown came, they initially wanted to have that base rate. and you, Dan was on when Carl Brown came, they initially wanted to have that base rate a lower number. They wanted to have it be 2,000, but the council at that time did not want to reduce the amount to 2,000. I mean, the council could look at changing their methodology for water billing and changing it to be less gallons, or, there's a lot of communities now that are charging exactly per the gallon that people are using and not having that flat rate 4,000. And 4,000 is a high number to be giving people.
Thank, thank you for bringing that up, Shari, because that's what I was going to ask. While I, I think that's a level of complexity that probably wouldn't work for this cycle, knowing that we need it for July 1st, but that certainly seems appropriate for future to look at that. And then another way that can help is once everyone in town gets the new meters that are much more precise, and we have the constant, or more, what is twice a day reading off of them, but once a day. But still, once a day versus once a month is going to be, you know, significantly better in being able to understand how, how are folks truly using water? And I think we can have some pretty good data, you know, 10 months from now about how we might change that. So if you haven't gotten your water meter replaced, do it, please.
It's going to have pros and cons to us, the meter usage being so accurate and per drop, because people are going to be more conscientious, because they'll be able to put the app on their phone, they'll be able to set their own, if, if they want to be alerted on so many gallons to keep their bill lower, they'll be able to do that. So I think we'll see conservation happen more, because people are going to be more mindful about the water and the number of gallons that they're using.
I saw Lance moving to the microphone, so I'll let him.
I know, I know this is tough to think about, so I'll just, you have a dollar amount you're trying to pay back in order to meet inflation, meet project costs. The one thing that's nice about nobody else doing projects is that brings competition. So maybe this fall, when we let these projects, we get better value than we have, but there's no guarantee. I mean, the price of pipe, the pipe, you know, it's plastics, it's valves, it's the infrastructure, it's the asphalt, it's the things that go into this. I mean, it, it is expensive out there, and everything's gotten more and expensive for our contractors, and we're trying to pay for it. You can reschedule your rates, you can look at doing it differently, but you're moving around which customers get charged which amount. You know, whether you're going to move that to a commercial area, paying more for a bigger meter, or, you know, look at it differently, but ultimately, the end goal is the same. So we can bring you other options, happy to discuss those, but it's tough, no matter how you look at it, whether it's a rural water customer, you know, those of us who are paying to buy it and move it, and, you know, have it outside town, all the way to a customer who is low usage to a business who's, you know, trying to use all this water for making bronze and sell that and make a business work here. It's, it's hard, but we can bring you options.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that, and, and I think one of the bottom lines is, again, the message that no one really wants to hear, but even if costs come down a little bit, they're way up from where they are. And simply the, the sheer number of miles of pipes that we have, this is going to be a long-term project, and it costs money. So, councilmember Stubble.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Mr. Alexander, for the thought-provoking comments. I would be curious, I think not for this round, you know, I think, you know, we'd go forward for this year, but given this high likelihood that we're going to come back with increases next year, our goal right now is to keep it at 9%, as Council, or as Mayor Wyatt mentioned, it's, you know, we'll see how the year goes over. Those options would be interesting to know. I'd like to know how many commercial and residential customers in, you know, each category are under, I don't know, 1,000 gallons a month, 500 gallons, like, you tell me what's a couple toilet flushes, right? And then what would that look like to our, if we did a lower minimum base charge for very low water usage? If we, you know, what would that look like for, be able to meet our obligations and still complete all these projects, right? And so the number of customers who would be in those categories would be interesting to me as well, to start with.
We do get that monthly. The bad thing for how commercial rates work is, so when you're an individual, you get winter averaging for your sewer. Well, commercial, they get charged per gallon, so even when they, unless they put a separate meter on, even when they're watering grass on their outside, they, they get charged for all the gallons that they use for the sewer portion of it.
Okay. Lance?
The other thing we do have is a few consecutive systems, such as the Wyoming Life Resource Center, and we haven't tiered their rates, even though they're a higher-impact customer, and some of our other customers who are paying single meter rate uses, even though there might be a lot more people behind those meters. So I think at some point, we'll bring you a plan for that as well, to help, you know, even out some of those costs to people who might be getting a better deal than, than they should be, or paying more than an in-town customer who already gave up their water rates and they're funding, you know, these projects, or selling our excess, and that should help as well. So we'll, we'll brainstorm this, and we'll bring you options, and we can go over them.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from council or the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public meeting at 6:35. Closed hearing. All right, now we move on to more public comment, communication from the floor. Please approach the microphone, state your full name for the record. This meeting and comments are electronically recorded, and all comments in this portion will be limited to three minutes.
Congratulations, Councilman Cassidy. Charles Woolone, Bill and Mary are ready to kick off the summer. Yep, they're excited, because the local alcohol festival is known all over the world as the best little brew fest in the west. So they each spend $80 for the ultimate weekend pass, which provides them with two days of unlimited sampling from over 90 different beers and distilled spirits. Oh, and no 20 minutes between drinks rule. Nope, none of that. Just two days of city-approved, Chamber of Commerce-sponsored, unlimited sampling of alcohol. Yahoo, right? Let the summer begin. Well, Bill and Mary quickly consume their first 12 ounces of beer and almost immediately reach a blood alcohol content level of 2/100 of 1%, at which point their level of inhibition has been compromised, and they are now in a state of inebriation where anything goes. And anything did go. Thus, seven weeks later, toward the end of July, you guessed it, Mary discovered that she is pregnant. Mary didn't want to be pregnant. I mean, Mary likes Bill, but would never want to marry him. Are you kidding? Be stuck with Bill for the rest of her life? No way. What to do? What are we going to do? Well, at seven weeks, at seven weeks, Mary and Bill's unborn little girl is the same size as a hummingbird egg. Question, for which one is the city of Lander a safe haven? A healthy, rapidly-developing, growing hummingbird egg? Or a healthy, rapidly-developing, growing, seven-week-old unborn little girl? Put another way, for which one, within the city limits of Lander, is it legal to kill? A healthy hummingbird egg, or a healthy, seven-week-old unborn little girl? Regarding the hummingbird egg, you better leave that thing alone. The mayor act of disturbing the nest, let alone killing an unhatched baby hummingbird, is illegal and can result in significant monetary fines and possible jail time. So you better leave that tiny egg alone. But if Lander is a safe haven for unhatched hummingbirds, shouldn't Lander also be a safe haven for unborn little girls and boys? Of course it should be, but it is not. In fact, if Mary wants to kill her seven-week-old, healthy, and rapidly-developing little baby, she can. As you might guess, in my opinion, as a biologist and a member of the species Homo sapiens, I find this situation totally unacceptable, highly offensive, and completely immoral. The very-
Mr. Woolone, you're at, you're three minutes. You could wrap up, please.
Okay, the very epitome of evil. In my opinion, it is no, it is a no-brainer that if Lander is a safe haven for unhatched baby hummingbirds, then obviously, it should also be a safe haven for unborn little human girls and boys. Honestly, I can't believe that in the year 2025, I'm actually standing before the city government officials having to make this point. So what if the unborn baby is 12 weeks old and the size of a paragon falcon? Well, we'll discuss that.
Thank you, Mr. Woolone. Anyone else for a public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to mayor and council updates, and councilmember Stubble, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor White. First, excited, Councilman Cassidy, to call you Councilman Cassidy, and to have you appear amongst us, so look forward to having, once again, a full council as well. What a relief, and for it to be you in that seat, I'm glad. I will have a few updates, Mayor, for my liaisons, liaison ships, committee assignments, let's put it that way. But first, let me say that as council president, I enjoy the privilege of being able to encourage you to attend different committees as liaisons. And so we'll make some switch-ups, I think, and have some conversation. I'll talk to each of you probably around July, so that Councilman Cassidy can land in a committee that's a good fit for him, and that means some of us might shuffle around in a few months of getting up to speed before we do that as well. So continue with your concurrent assignments and be prepped. I'll, I'll give you some calls, and we can see where we can, where's a good fit for Councilman Cassidy, and where you all want to land to. On the two committee assignments that I'm on right now, that have met since our last meeting, I'll say the Energy and Environment Task Force is busy working with city staff, thinking about some efficiency projects, because Rocky Mountain Power reached out to the staff and the E and E volunteers, asking us, encouraging us to apply for the Blue Sky Grant Program, which allows for, I think, a number of things, but particularly solar and battery installations. And for Rocky Mountain Power, usually, it's a very competitive program for them to come to us and say, hey, we still have a pot of money, we'd like to do something with Lander. I think is a real testament to how they think of us, what expertise they know we have. And so the staff and E and E are working on a proposal that will come to council at our next work session to get briefed on about what they think might be a good fit for us to apply to Rocky Mountain Power for that program. Next, I was at the Urban Systems Meeting today, which I think there were four of us, so pretty good representation. I'll rely on my other attendees to fill in any gaps here. This is a committee that meets once a year on average, and so not a too heavy of a lift. And administrators makes proposals to YDOT for us, a pot of money that the Wyoming Transportation Commission authorizes use of, and it's restricted, although there was a wide array of roads that this could be used to, for me and arterials actually coming through town. And we accrue about $143,000 a year. Looking for Regina to double-check, I left my notes at home, and have gotten up to about a $700,000 pot of allocation, because we haven't spent it in recent years. We've been kind of letting it accrue, because of, as you can, as we talk about every meeting, costs on some of these projects are going through the roof, so getting a meaningful amount was the plan forward. And so today, the meeting, we pitched and discussed with the citizen representatives on the board, as well as YDOT, what about funding, helping fund our Fifth Street project, which is hopefully going out to bid this fall, and would be then in construction next year, if all goes according to plan. And YDOT felt that that timing was perhaps a little difficult for them to go through all the reviews, though, let me say this, we have the design completely done for Fifth Street, because of our forethought and our staff getting us ready for these things. The YDOT level of review that needed to happen for them to allow that allocation of this money seemed a little tight for them for the fall bid. So the committee had extensive discussion and landed instead on asking YDOT to allow us to use those funds on the Cascade project, which ideally, if all goes according to plan, we bid in fall '26 and then construct in 2027. And then that would give the agency time, the state agency time, for all the boxes they need to check and reviews they need to do. Cascade's also fully designed, so we're ready to go. I would defer Regina or Mayor White, anything you want to add that I, great, awesome, without my notes even. That is all I have for today.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of updates. First of all, Lita, I'm, I only have five toes in now, I'm slowly removing myself, but they're, they're having a meeting on Thursday, and there is some additional fund request possibly from the city, and so if we could just make sure we have that conversation with Lita. There's some funds available that maybe they didn't draw down from the previous, and also, Shari, correct, I'm not going to say it correct, there's some other funds available for them, specifically as it relates to grant writing. So there's, you know, they need to leverage money in order to do, to move their mission and vision forward, and they have no money. So we need to figure out how to assist with that, so that they can start the process of really paying for themselves, essentially, and I'll leave it at that. And the chamber, we had a meeting with them in March, another meeting in April. Just always impressed with the workings of the chamber and their willingness to continue to partner the city and be helpful. And also, I'll say, the Brew Fest is coming June 13th and 14th, which is a good push for our economy here in, in Lander. And even though there is always question around alcohol consumption, certainly it's personal accountability and responsibility. Having the Brew Fest doesn't cause that overconsumption and does not necessarily encourage it in the times that I've been there. I will say that there will be local trucks, food trucks, and some live music that should be really entertaining, actually. And the best part about it is, it's moving back to the City Park. That's important. Golf course, they had a building remodel, if you've not been up there, you should go, it's really cool, it's starting to look, you know, just, it looks nice. The restaurant's opened, and also, if you haven't been there, you should. It's a great hamburger, it's super quick. Impressed with them as well. And the back nine, for those who golf, and if you're not taking advantage of that, you are crazy. Back nine will be closed for aerating, so that will happen, I think, this week. It'll be, it'll be closed. Is that right? Yep. Yes, for two weeks. And the improvement to the golfing aesthetic and area is, I mean, it's, it's visible, it's, it's good. I don't know that it compares to Mesquite or St. George, wherever you are at, but whatever, it's fine, we're doing good. And then the Community Service Block Grant, just another organization that I sit on. They're, they're still plugging away, working through, enhancing what they're doing. It's been a little bit of a challenge, and I'm not going to get into that too much, but they're still a little bit hamstrung by some decisions that are being made at the federal level, so they're, they're unclear of what their future holds. Unfortunate, but that is all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hahn?
First, I have a question, how's our new pro doing up there?
You know, I think good. Yeah, I do think he's doing a good job.
Happy?
The pro shop's great, it actually looks like a pro shop now.
Really?
Yeah, it's good.
Update, Lander Old Timer Rodeo, they're doing a little work on the arena, and they're still working on 4th of July. They're, they're just about ready to go, so 4th of July will be just right around the corner. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Cassidy, what do you got?
Mayor, councilmembers and staff, just say thank you. Very grateful for the welcome aboard from all of you, and I look forward to working with you here in the future.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. Had the senior center board meeting there the day, and they were pretty excited that they had received a grant from, from Lord, and also Wind River Oxygen, and had received $5,000 worth of medical equipment via, or being wheelchairs, walkers, crutches, that kind of stuff, and I, I guess the other stuff had been pretty well-used and worn out, and so they've, they've got some new stuff there, and they were really excited about that. Got the Propoja Conservation District meeting tomorrow morning, but they, they just had their, their garden expo there last month in, in April, and my goodness, that place was busy. It was just, it was just packed full the, the whole time, and a lot of good information that was, was there, and a lot of vendors utilized it, and it was, it went very well. Fremont County Solid Waste District meeting will be next Monday. They're in the, the process of going to the county commission and, and justifying their, their budget, and always fun and games, you know. Planning and zoning has, has, has been very interesting to me. You know, it's that, that's a part of the, the city government that I had never been associated with before. And there's a lot to it. There's, there's a lot going on there. And I'm very much in the, in the process of just learning, and it was really nice a couple of weeks ago that we didn't have enough board members to, to have a, a real meeting, and so it was just answer questions, show and tell, I guess, basically by those that, that were there to, to try and answer questions that we, that I didn't understand. And so, I really appreciated the, the time they took to do that. And I think that that's about all we've got. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Stubble, you said you had an addendum?
Thank you, Mayor. I did forget one item for councilmembers. Kara Kolevich, the organizer extraordinaire, I don't actually remember her title right now, for Energy and Environment, wanted me to remind you that she has emailed all of us at our council addresses, offering to meet to discuss that proposal we might make to Rocky Mountain Power around some solar and battery potential or options. So, if you do want to learn more before our work session, when we'll hear more detail, please reach out to Kara. She's very well informed and a talented asset to our community, I tell her an asset, but yeah, please take advantage of the offer. She means it sincerely and loves to, to have those kind of conversations. So, check your email for that contact info. And Councilman Cassidy, I don't know if your email's set up yet, but I can get you her contact. Yeah, thank you.
Great. Wonderful. Councilman Joshon.
I have nothing this evening. Excuse me for my latest. Sorry about that.
That's quite all right. Life, life happens. I've got a few for me. One other thing following up on Lita. So, Wyoming Outdoor Weekend is this Friday and Saturday. Friday is largely school groups moving through a variety of stations. Saturday is the, I think there's a Wild Game Cook-Off and lots of vendors and other educational things going on, and the Shop Local. So, any receipts other than food for this week, you can exchange for raffle tickets, and then there's an incredible array of raffle prizes. You can allocate your, your things to. It's neat, neat that they do that. I attended the Funding Summit a couple of weeks ago in Riverton that Senators Brassau and Lummis hosted along with the Office of Wyoming State Grants. And a couple of things come to mind from that was kind of reiterating what we talked about in our, our public hearing today, but all of the different state offices that were there were very clear that they have no desire to see a project until it's been engineered. And I know that's caused some heartache for some of our residents about why are we engineering things? Why don't we, you know, is that the best use of our money? But truly, that's, that's what we need for them to even entertain, joining us as partners. So, I appreciate the engineering work that's done. And likewise, they reiterated that if the municipality is not working to appropriately price the, the services they're provided, that they're not very interested in partnering with us. So, those were resounding messages through that. Also attended the Outdoor Recreation Conference along with what seemed like half of Lander or Lander area folks presenting and, and being partners there. And that was interesting, again, to hear from many and very different speakers about the role of city recreational infrastructure and how important that was for business retention and employee recruitment. So, things like pathways, bike paths, park space were continually noted over and over again by a wide variety of folks for that. That was eye-opening for me to see that. Couple of laundry things here. Earlier, we talked about forming a semi-quintcentennial committee, and it turns out really that happens through the county level, so we will not have a, a Lander-based entity. If folks want to apply for that, then it goes through the county. Does that really upset you, John, that we don't have that? You just wanted to say semi-quintcentennial all the time, didn't you? Likewise, a great gratitude to leadership Fremont County and Momentum for making the benches and the mobility implements happen. That's fantastic to see so many Lander residents stepping out for that. I gave testimony to the Corporations, Joint Corporations Meeting that was here in Lander last week. One of the big topics is whether or not we can use our taxpayer dollars for our WAM membership. WAM is very clear that they can show that any, any funds remotely used for advocacy or, you know, present to the legislature come from a different funding bucket. And really, what our dues are, are things like, you know, being able to, to hand Mr. Cassidy, you know, here's a whole bunch of information about Mayor and Council, or they're providing training on the various things that the legislature passed, like the fiduciary training. The legislature's not providing the actual training for that. WAM does. So, that will continue to be a, a conversation. We'll have the Wyoming County Commissioners Association in town later this week. Also have, found out that Wyoming State Parks and Cultural Resources Department is a finalist in the National Recreation and Park Association, which is a really big deal. So, this is all the municipal parks, all the, all the state parks, all 50 states, and they're one of the top finalists so far. They're hoping to win it, of course. Two more things. April air service employment, the first time in any of our consistent recorded history that we were over 2,000 employments, which was pretty exciting. Sadly, the, the average ticket price was lower than we hoped for, but at least folks are, are using that. And then lastly, just wanted to note that even though it's a little bit early in the season, this is also, though, the season of highly unpredictable and volatile weather, and city staff are monitoring for changing flood conditions. So, folks get asked about that.
Councilman Dan Hahn.
I was going to make a comment. I, I, the other night, I was talking with a gentleman from over there in Riverton. I think I saw one of the 80-seaters come in. They were talking about an 80-seater.
Yeah, 70 or 80 possibility. Yeah.
Yeah. To bring, to bring the price tag down. And we saw, we, I think it was an 80-seater that they came in, unless it was something else, but it looked like a commercial flight. But they were talking about going to an 80-seater because it's cheaper.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah. Well, that's great.
Just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to staff. And interim Chief Wa, we'll let you start. Thanks for joining us virtually.
I don't have anything pressing, Mayor. I can answer questions. It's hard to show and tell over Zoom, as Councilwoman Cox would know. So, nothing pressing to show right now.
Okay. Any questions for interim chief? Nope. Okay, Lance.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few things. We're in full-blown construction season, so we've got, as you see, Lincoln Street getting started. These first few blocks are going to be some of our hardest blocks as far as pedestrian transportation, vehicles, ambulances, you know, everybody that uses Second Street to, to get out of town. So, lots of discussions on trying to accommodate traffic as best we can and getting in and out of that intersection as fast as we can, but there's going to be some eggs breaking to make this omelet. So, we'll try to communicate as best we can as to what's going on and then work through that. They're trying to get out of the intersections as quickly as possible that run north and south, and then, you know, work block by block the rest of the way. So, things are, things are moving there, which is great. You can see that the McFarland Drive Project's moving right along, so connections, tie-ins, they're working on sewer at this point, making good progress there. They'll probably be tearing up the road here pretty soon and working on the new base curb and gutter fabric, you know, rebuilding that infrastructure as well. Bishop Randall's moving at this point. So, lots of things coming together. At the hospital, still exploring some alternatives of trying to find some redundant lines around that hospital that, if we don't cap them, I'm worried at some point they're going to become a problem for the hospital itself. So, seeing if our new line can replace those and, you know, get rid of some of that existing infrastructure up there. Wrapping up the tank and pump station job, we're getting into that substantial to the final completion range. There's a big punch list of items that they're working on, but substantially, we can run and operate the system. The tank is in operation. The major things have been done there. Looking at some grant opportunities, I stepped out for a second, so if you guys talked about our Urban Systems Meeting, I apologize, but, you know, looking at it, being able to apply the Urban Systems money that accumulates to one of our future projects, potentially Cascade, which would be over a million dollars of savings there. And then potentially, that could be a transmission line project that we should shoot for a 50% grant from Water Development on the water side, where we have those opportunities. That's two years out. You know, that doesn't affect next year's projects, but we'll do everything we can to pair any sort of funds that are grant to these projects to, you know, lower our local rates and match as much as possible. So, also met with YDOT, and we're looking at Phase Two of the tap funding on the sidewalk project. So, they have money. It has to be spent by 2026. And so, we're going to try to make another application and see if the other half of that project can be built. So, we'll keep you in the loop as we hear back on some of these things. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Lance?
Mayor, if I may, I think a point of clarification, Lance, for me, for my presentation, I did my very best with Urban Systems, but I neglected one fact. So, you, as you just pointed out rightly, we would yield to apply about a million dollars to Cascade. I mentioned 700,000 solely because I forgot to mention, that's what we've accrued, but we can borrow ahead two years allocations for that project. So, we'd equal out about 1.1.
I was thinking it's going to be 1.1 because it's going to be that 135,000 this year that gets there, and then two years at that same rate in addition to it.
That's right. I mentioned the lower number, and I wanted to clarify why we had two different.
You know, and I, originally, we were looking at county projects because that is a, you know, a joint board, but they're now saying, you know, that Hillcrest isn't going to happen for them, or anything on the Baldwin Squaw Creek loops. Like, things are going on hold. And so, that's great they're working with us and giving us the opportunity to use that money for our projects, but kind of sad that we're not going to see any improvements outside this city limit boundaries.
Anything else for Lance? Regina, your turn.
I don't have a, anything tonight unless you have questions for me. Questions for Regina? Okay, Shari.
The money that Councilmember Cox was speaking to was the Lita money for economic development from the Maven Project. A portion of that payment goes to the state, and then a portion gets retained by the city. And the agreement signed was that that money goes to the Lita group. So, currently, we owe them $9,076. So, I have told them to go ahead and send us an invoice for that, so that we can get that number off of our books. The State Lenham Investments will be here tomorrow. They're looking at ARPA, our ARPA projects, which is Lincoln Street and Bishop Randall Road. I guess they come in, take a lot of pictures, make sure that we're Davis Bacon, make sure that we're buying American, take pictures of our, what we have. The budget that you'll be looking at tonight, I did put the complete budget packet in your folder. Everything that was changed is highlighted in yellow. So, unless you make any changes to that, that's the one that we'll read in and approve on the June meeting. That's all I have, unless you have.
Not a question, but a point of order. So, as the Maven Project progressed, it, while originally it said the money would go to Lita, that was changed in it because the city's the one holding the, the loan, that it actually comes to the city, and Lita has the opportunity to request some of that funding, but it doesn't automatically go to Lita. So, I just want to make sure that, that gets clarified. That's important clarification for that.
Mayor, if I may, does that alter the invoice for $9,000 then? The treasurer is asking for?
Well, they give $5,000 every year in the budget, but in addition to that, the agreement that was signed and the, was signed.
We amended that in February, I believe. Is that right?
Well, it's, it's, I reported it to the state that it's sitting on the books owed to somebody for economic development.
Correct. It, it does need to stay for economic development, but it doesn't necessarily go automatically to Lita. We can certainly grant that if there's a compelling reason for them. Sounds like they will give us that reason. But just because ultimately it's a fairly large sum of money, I want to be really clear that that doesn't automatically go to Lita. It comes to the city for the purpose of economic development.
Well, then, maybe we should put that on a work session for discussion to, at the next work session, that Lita's interested in asking for that money.
Yeah, I think that's really important for Lita perspective, that they know.
They, they've been told that.
But I think dollar for dollar and what, and they do have a different plan, not a different plan, but a executing their plan. That will help.
Yeah.
Mayor, point of order on that, just, we amended the MOU of this looking, I think it was February, is that right? It feels fresh-ish. We amended it in the moment here, so the MOU version in our packet is outdated. Could we, could you send around, please, or whoever is relevant, the final MOU with the amendment that we made?
I thought we had that, but.
What's in the packet for that date is what we then changed in the meeting that night. So, I don't know that I've seen the final version with the amendment incorporated. That makes sense.
Yeah, I'll make a note of that.
At least by the time we have a work session with them and we can have all that, clear it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam, anything on your end?
I don't have anything tonight unless somebody has questions for me.
Questions for Adam? Okay, for Shell.
Working with the interview team towards a replacement for Shari's position that has closed. There were fairly large number of applicants, so weeding through them, hoping to be able to call and schedule interviews for that the end of the month, beginning of next month, depending on people's availability. We've had some folks out of the office, and that always slows the process down. Parks and Rec Cemetery, those seasonal positions are almost all full. Spoke with Field today, and maybe the cemetery might be looking for one more, but he has an interview scheduled. So, we'll get all of those people onboarded and underway with all of their prescreening and things of that nature. Next work session, remember, there's a, a meeting next Tuesday on the 20th. It's a special meeting, so I'll send out the call for that. There are two things on the agenda. It will be the final master plan information, which will include the Parks and Rec, as well as the, the goal-setting session for strategic planning that, that we had several months ago. That'll be wrapped up with Kristen Gunther. Then, on the 27th, there will be a meeting. There will most likely be a voting session before the work session to go ahead and award the property insurance. There was a bid opening on those earlier this week. We received two, one from Tegler here in town, who we've currently used before, Tim Robson and his, his business. And the other one, we received a bid from Warm. So, I'll present the information, trying to make that apples to apples. Insurance is not always clear and straightforward. So, making sure that we're talking the same amounts of coverage and the same, things like that, so that the council can make a decision. One interesting thing I found out this year was that they, both of them, will offer an employee training program that will cover some of our OSHA-required topics, so we wouldn't have to purchase that separately, which would be nice for the city. And it would be nice because all of our seasonal employees could use it as well without having to pay an additional license for an employee that might be here three or four months. Also, on the 27th, there'll be a work session with a variety of topics. I'm hoping to have an updated policy manual, as well as talking about the changes that council asks for when it comes to liquor licensing. Any questions for me?
Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Did I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Stubble. Any discussions? Do we have the, the meeting minutes of April 8th, April 15th, April 22nd special, April 22nd work session, and bills and claims?
I do want to just make a comment, Mayor, in reference to the bills and claims. Yes, that's okay. I just need to, I ju, I would just like to articulate how well our finances are tracked to, you know, the penny. They're very easy to read. That, you know, you can get in-depth with them, but everything you need to know is there. And then, and at any time, if you have questions, Shari is available to, like, hey, I'll, I'll ask some silly question, like, how come there was only $50 in this? And she's like, well, okay, Melinda. But anyway, I just want to acknowledge how important that is, especially in this day and age, and, and just how thorough it is, and we're really fortunate to have that. So, thank you.
Great. Other comments, questions? Great call for the question, Councilman Joshon.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
And motion passes. So, moving on to nine, unfinished, unfinished business action item. To approve the third and final reading of Ordinance 25-4, fixing into fixing and determining the middle levy necessary to be levied to raise sufficient money by general tax to meet the current expenses of the City Lander for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025. Can I get a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by council member Larson, seconded by council member Dan Han. Any comments, questions, discussion? Okay, seeing none. Call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Motion passes. All right, moving on to the first new business. Shari, this will be you who read the requested city of Lander budget FY 2526 into the minutes. Could I get a motion?
Mayor, I move approval. I'm sorry, no, I, what am I moving to read the budget in to the minutes?
Great. And could I get a second?
Second.
Moved by council member Stubble, seconded by council member Josh Han. And Shari, we'll turn it over to you.
General fund $8,232,382. Enterprise fund $41,025,698. Optional tax $10,015,817. Economic development $1,075,000. Airport fund $1,908,528. Capital projects $200,000. Senior center $21,000.
Great. Any discussion or questions from council?
Mayor, we'll also have a chance. The June business meeting is when we'll approve this, is that right?
That's correct.
Great. Well, I think I'd like to make some comments now. Certainly hope to hear from folks for the next month as well, if they have questions, comments, concerns with what we're doing. But I, I think first as a small detail, this budget reflects the change that we gave agreement to that we would apply a cost of living increase for all of our staff that would be in accordance with the actual cost of living increases in this region. And so that came up to be, I think, $56,000 across the entire budget that was moved around in order to apply that cost of living increase. And I said it before, I'll say it again, I just, I'm so glad that we're doing that. I think it's essential for retaining our talented staff, for staying competitive in the job market. And for, honestly, if we didn't do it, our staff would be losing money by working for us. Their dollars would go less, you know, farther because the costs are going up on their daily lives and their household budgets as well. And if we don't accommodate that cost of living in our salary schedule and our compensation, frankly, we risk losing staff, but we're, I would think it's an insult as well to them. So I'm glad that we're considering that and I hope we approve the budget with that cost of living increase. In general, I want to say, you know, we all read the local news. I'm sure many of us in this room in great detail and you see the news right now is full of crisis moments and some of our fellow governments, community college, county government. We see it hitting the streets, like Lance said today, that the county said, yeah, zero projects. We're, we're going to do some painting, we're going to do some signage. We are not going forward and I fact-checked me on when they actually approved their budget, but the intentions there is no big projects, they can't afford it. You don't see that crisis here in our budget. If you go through and start to scour, you see we've made cost reductions across the board at small scales to spend within our means, to spend responsibly. But you might be questioning, and I think a lot of people are, of, aren't we seeing a pretty drastic reduction in property tax? And what does that mean for the services we provide? So we're budgeting for a loss of $250,000, a quarter million loss in property taxes because of the relief that we provided to our residents that they voted for and asked the legislature to provide. The actual decrease will probably lessen that, but we budget conservatively so that we're not surprised, you know, at the end of the year. And the way you see that hit the budget here, again, it's, it's a chunk of money, quarter million dollars, but we're, it's not a crisis for City of Lander, I believe, because of the fiscal responsibility of our last four, five, six years, maybe say last decade. But we have staff who are deeply prudent, have been creative with finding revenue streams for providing some of the big projects that we're going after. We have a lot of discipline in how we spend. We have departments that are deeply collaborative and will help each other out. So for example, in this budget, you see the fire department took a $15,000 hit that is going to be accommodated with some other departments, you know, lending a hand. And so it's not a crisis this year for us in the same way other governments are facing. That doesn't mean it won't be if we continue to see reductions in those revenue streams. But none of us are surprised by the fact that there's unreliability in the funding that comes to Lander, that we have very little control over our revenue streams, honestly, which is where our fee reductions is one place that we have decision-making authority. And so we have to consider those careful increases. But we've all sat here for a year. Well, I've sat as many years as some of you, but, but I know we've had discussions about, gosh, is the state distribution going to come again this year? Can we rely on it? And so because of that, the body and the staff have decided to set money aside, build up our equipment replacement fund, build up our reserves so we can buffer these kind of moments and not have to slash and burn and be in crisis mode management. So I'm concerned for the future if we continue to see losses in our, our general funds and our revenue. But I'm pleased to say that this year, I'm struggling to say it's not a bump. It's uncomfortable. We're going to be able to manage it. And it's because of the way we've been budgeting and spending prudently for quite a while now. So thanks to the staff as always, who take care of our funds, like the stewards that they intend to be. And thanks to the council for the forethought in putting aside some reserves and some significant reserves, so we continue to replace equipment as needed and not have to cut services in such a drastic way as some of our compatriots. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for those comments. I'm, I'm glad you brought them out. So I think similarly, and I, I'm very glad that for us, it's, as you said, it's uncomfortable and not catastrophic, and it truly is catastrophic for others. So you know, again, there's, there's times we're making decisions for next week and there's times we're making decisions for years out. And I'm glad we've been thinking about that horizon. It's really important for us to be doing that. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Next, approve resolution 1354, declaring certain city-owned property as surplus property and authoring sale of the same to the highest bidder. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved by council member Cox, seconded by council member Stubble. And Lance, I think this is yours to explain to us, please.
Sure. This is something that we haven't been doing in the past, but we're doing now. And this is to any equipment that we're putting up for sale, we're going to make sure that it meets the requirement of going surplus before it goes to auction and then gets advertised appropriately. So this was a deep dive on if we were doing this correctly because we have a sewer jet that has value, you know, that's used value in the market. But just want to make sure that we're following appropriately, following state statute and then also reflecting the purchase from the highest bidder and going through those processes. So as we bring equipment forward that we're thinking of, you know, selling and as we talked about, even our cop cars, you know, potentially the replacement plan works better if we're selling those with some value to them. We're going to be coming back, trying to put replacement funds in that equipment replacement fine item. And this is a way that those funds somewhat replace themselves. We hold value and then, yeah, get the best possible cost to make that plan work. So that's what you're seeing in front of you is items that we're, we're talking about auctioning off to the highest bidder.
Great. Thank you for that. And Adam and Rochelle, thank you. I know you both spent a lot of time with the Green Book and making sure we're doing this absolutely appropriately. Yes, Councilman Larson.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to make a comment, you know, you, you look at that 2003 sewer jet and you've only got 16,440 miles on the, on the tractor and frame. And you think, well, geez, that's, that's brand new. But it's the, it's the equipment on the back of the truck that goes to crap on you. And that's.
No pun intended.
That's what, yeah. That, that's why it's had its useful life.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, call for the question, starting with Councilman Josh Han.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, resolution 1355, approving industry representative support for the annual Lander Brew Fest event on June 13th and 14th, 2025, pursuant to Wyoming statute 12-5-402. Once again, a motion in a second and then Rochelle can fill us in.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by council member Cox, seconded by council member Stubble. And Rochelle?
Good. This is the request for the Brew Fest for the brewers and the distillers to be able to provide their alcohol at the event. It's required by statute that that get approved if their industry representatives that are providing the donated alcohol and brewers fall under that definition. I see that the chamber, Carol is here on behalf of the chamber. I put it in the form of a resolution this year, just so it's kind of easier to find when we or when the council decides to do these, these types of things. The list of vendors, I threw that in as well. I have not heard from Jason Allen at the State Liquor Division, if everybody has their territorial assignments, if they're out of state or there necessary paperwork in place. So I'm, I'm not 100% sure about that. We still have a month out. Megan, I know, has been working hard on this and been in contact with the State Liquor Division. She's always very responsible when I reach out to her. I hadn't heard interim chief that there were any problems last year. It's my understanding from the police department perspective that usually Brew Fest is, is pretty well-run, pretty responsible. And the addition of WR TA and the Safe Rides is helpful as well.
Great. In interim chief, while since you're, you're here with us, can you confirm that that is accurate about how Brew Fest tends to operate?
Yeah, they, they do everything that we're trying to do in our title too, as far as best practice with service. We, if the council is not aware, we get extra funding every year by the state for the one we'll use for Brew Fest is UDL. It's for enforcing underage drinking laws. It's overtime the guys can sign up for. And that's how we provide foot patrol. I've entered into an agreement with our DUI team that we usually deploy that we're going to have a couple of more cars over here this year to help shut down any kind of drunk driving, but overall it's pretty low-key.
Thank you. So Rochelle, you mentioned that you can't confirm that all of the folks have filed appropriate paperwork with the state. So is that something we should create a caveat in this as we pass it, that pending?
And, and then of, the territorial assignments aren't needed for the in-state brewers. It would just be the out-of-state brewers. And there is one distiller that's from out of state. I can't remember the name of it. It's 10 something or other, but Megan did confirm that they're a fairly big outfit and have been in contact with Ian at the State Liquor Division. So I anticipate that whatever needs to be in place there will be. That's something above the local level. So it'd be perhaps something the council would want to consider approving contingent, you know, that the out-of-state folks get the necessary authorizations in place to satisfy the State Liquor Division. But all the in-state people are, should be fine. And to get, necessary because we're talking about brewers and distillers and their industry representatives. So for example, if someone had a retail license holder wanted to pair up with a worthy cause and they say, okay, I want to donate $1,000 worth of whatever to your event and the retail liquor license is going to pay for it, that doesn't require approval. It only requires approval if the person donating the alcohol is an industry representative. It's confusing.
Okay. So would anyone like to, to make that amendment to this?
Sure, Mayor, I can try that. So amendment would be to approve resolution 1354, declaring certain city-owned, I'm sorry, approve resolution 1355, approving industry representative support for the annual Lander Brew Fest event on June 13th and 14th, 2025, pursuant to Wyoming state statute 12542, contingent on having the out-of-state suppliers obtain the necessary state authorizations prior to the event.
Nicely stated. Could I get a second?
Second.
Okay. So Adam, I'm looking at you. So we need to vote on the amendment and then vote on the overall. Okay, great. So let's, any other comments or questions? Okay, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and now on the, we've approved the amendment and now the, the official approving resolution 1335, as council member Stubble said. So we'll do that same round again. Mr. Larson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. All right, next we have appoint Anne Even to the Wind River Visitors Council for a two-year, two-year term ending June 30th, 2027. And reappoint Krista Libera for a second three-year term ending June 30, 2028. Regine, is this anything you give information on or I think it's pretty straightforward?
The reason that there are two-year term and a three-year term is to stagger them so that we're not, the city's not replacing their two representatives in the same year. So that's one reason. And Owen had asked to be on an additional year. We were going to appoint Anne last year. So that's the reason for the difference in terms. Typically, they're three-year terms and the city appoints two separate representatives.
Any other questions? Okay, call for the question, Councilman Josh Han.
Yes.
Yes.
Did we have a motion?
Actually.
We didn't have a motion.
So sorry. Getting ahead of myself.
I'm, I'll move to, move, move to approve to appoint Anne Even to the Wind River Visitors Council for two-year term ending June 30th, 2027 and reappoint Krista Libera for a second year, three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second that.
Got a motion by council member Cox, seconded by council member Josh Han. Now we will call for the question, Councilman Josh Han.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And motion passes. Next, accept Pete Springer's resignation from the tree board. Councilmember Stubble, can I ask you to give the quick overview on that, please?
Sure. I mean, many thanks to Mr. Springer for his service on, I feel like they got together in July last year, is that right? So almost a year. He's been a really active participant, certainly dedicated to the cause, but ultimately decided service on the committee itself was not a great fit for him. So he has our gratitude and I move that we approve his resignation or accept his resignation.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Moved by council member Stubble, seconded by council member Cox. And we'll call for the question, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, accept statement of work quote Q937441 and authorize the addition of the Recreation Management Service to Civic Plus Master Agreement in the initial amount of $8,198 and $3,620 per year thereafter. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by council member Larson, seconded by council member Cox. And Regine, I think this is info you can fill us in on.
Sure. This is another module on our Civic Plus agreement, which runs, our software agreement, which runs our website. What we're doing is we're moving away from sports sites, which is what Parks and Recreation uses now. And eventually will we be replacing a second check front site that we do for our scheduling and our rental payments for the community center. So it's just an efficiency and by the time we pay the $3,620 a year is less expensive than the two sites we currently hold now.
Oh, thanks for the cost savings. Any questions for Regine about this? Okay, seeing none. Call for the question, Councilman Josh Han.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next. Need to take a deep breath for this one. Approve attachment C District 3 between the Wyoming State Forest 3 Division, Wyoming Military Department, USDA Forest Service, USDI Bureau of Land Management, USDI Bureau of Reclamation, National Park Service, Fish and Wildlife Service, Bureau of Indian Affairs, Bighorn County and Bighorn County Fire Districts 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, Fremont County, Fremont County Fire District, Dubois Fire District, Jeffrey City Fire District, Riverton Fire District, City of Lander, Hot Springs County, Hot Springs County Fire District, Park County, Park County Fire Districts Joint Powers Board, Park County Fire Districts 1, 2, 3, and 4, Washegi County, Worland Fire District Number 1, Tensleep Fire District, and Town of Tensleep for interagency cooperation. So this will likewise do a motion in a second and then questions about it.
So moved.
Moved by council member Dan Han, seconded by council member Cox. Rochelle, can you give us the overview on this, please?
So volunteer fire chief Eric Seiwick emailed this to me, asking that the council approve it. City attorney Phillips has looked at it. It's a mutual aid agreement in essence. Probably council member Han know more about it than I do, but it seems to be the same type of document that happens every year so that our friends and neighbors can call and. friends and neighbors can call on us and we can call upon them.
Any questions about this?
No, I just have a comment as far as what the requirements are because they're very little compared to the signature pages. In reference to the purpose of this notification is request of assistance, approval of retardant or equipment use. And I'm guessing each agency uses the same retardant or do they? Do you guys know? That makes no difference. Anyway, I just was shocked by how large the document was with such a small scope, if you will.
And I apologize for the title. I didn't, I tried to to slim it down as much as I could, but there's just so many things you can leave out.
Okay, other comments or questions? Okay, call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 And that motion passes. Next up, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to the agreement for professional services, amendment number two dated April 22, 2025, increasing the original scope of the Parks Master Plan Agreement for the sum of $6,860. So could I get a motion in a second, please? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Stubble. And Regine, I think this is you.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is because staff requested more information than was in the original scope of work. Original, the Parks Master Plan was going to be basically anything that has the word park in the title. But we increased the scope to include all of the grounds maintained by the city. So it includes things the steers, the steers up here, agreements we have with YDOT, pathways, those kinds of things.
Comments or questions for Regine on this?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmembers too.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. Will they, it'll be probably a little early then to present on these additional pieces next week, I imagine. When will we hear the findings?
They asked for a little bit of clarification today, but basically we're done with the work. So there won't be any increased work after. You'll get the final version next week.
Great, with these additions included. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess I, I mean, the explanation is okay, but you said we're done with the work. And so we're talking. I mean, what are they getting $6,000 more for?
So what happened was when they presented to staff for comments, we had Lance and Parks and Recs and Ann and I in a room. And we said, well, what about the softball fields? They're a park. What about the, and so we asked them to do additional work on that. And by the time we get around a month later for a voting session, this is where we're at.
So they didn't know about those parks prior to their initial?
They weren't in the original scope of work. It was City Park, Lander Park, Analog Park, anything that ended in Park.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none. Call for the questions, starting with Councilmember Joshon.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Motion passes. Item I, S 25 dash point 03, approve Earl and Farlow Block 103 lots 18 to 19 replat. Motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Dan Hon, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Regine, can you fill us in, please?
Thank you. This item has been through the planning commission and they recommend approval of this plat. Essentially, what it does is it takes three regular original town size lots and turns it into five lots. And it's in a commercial zone on the corner of Lincoln and 9, but it will primarily be used for residential purposes as the owner currently has it intended. And the owner is here if you have any questions.
Just a quick question here on our information that we got from city, it shows S 25.02 and then here on our agenda, it shows 2503 is that critical item or which one is correct?
I don't have it.
Good catch.
Yeah, and if you would, if you would just say Earl and Farlow Block 103 lots 18 and 20 replat, that would be sufficient and or I can go look up the correct number.
If you're happy with the 2503 and the Earl and Farlow Blocks 103 lots 18 through 20 replat, I'm good with that.
It says it separate. I mean, at the top of the document, it's S 25 dot 02, and then at the bottom, it says 25.
Does it?
Yes, so that
That's incorrect.
Yeah, staff's recommending that. So it seems like that's an error on the document at the heading.
Perfect.
Maybe.
We'll make it 2503.
2503?
Yeah. Executive could have a decision here.
That's fine.
Well, Mayor, let me
Yes.
Aside from the titling and headlines, I would just comment, I'm glad to see this development. I think it's a prime spot for adding a little little more density, if I dare say the word. A great zone for it. I hope it's somewhat related to the fact that we're doing major investments and rebuilds on Lincoln. And even if it's not, it would be exciting to see the investments we do in our infrastructure around town then spur this type of development in appropriate places. That folks will be drawn to places that are not full of potholes and frozen mains to do the development. So we've seen some really tidy smaller homes being built on Lincoln Street already. I think that, yeah, exciting to see it. So thanks for the proposal and I'll be a yes vote.
Other comments?
No, I think it's really valuable that, yeah, this is great.
Yep. All right, call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Next, item K, authorize the mayor to sign the Summit West CPA Group PC Engagement Letter for 2425 Audit Services.
Mayor, did we skip an item here?
Oh, I am so sorry. Yes, I sure did.
Jay.
Go back to Jay. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Laura Foundation Grant for New Grills for Lander Public Parks in the amount and in the amount of $27,788.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Cox. And Regine, I think this might also be you.
Okay, I'll give it a shot. I didn't do too well in the last one, so. The new grills for the Lander Public Parks, they they're 20 years old. They've aged out. We have a lot of maintenance issues with them. We tried to get some grant funding through the Wyoming Community Gas, you know, so for a couple of years, we've been trying to get grant funding for this. And then a citizen came up and we are now getting Laura Foundation grant funds. They're basically the same size and the same type of grills, but as you can see, it's a pretty pricey sum to get those replaced. So Laura Foundation is covering it.
Yeah, that's lovely.
Yay for Laura.
So just by clarification, since I think this has become somewhat concerning, what three parks are these going in?
I think there's only two, but Lance might have to correct me. So it's Lion Shelter at City Park and then North Park.
Yeah. Do you show three?
Yes, two at City Park and then one
Oh, two at City. Yeah, three grills, two at City Park, one at North Park.
Thank you.
I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Okay, call for the question, Councilman Joshon.
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Now on to K, authorize the mayor to sign the Summit West CPA Group PC Engagement Letter for 202425 Audit Services. Can I get a motion in a second? So moved. All second. Moved by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Stubble. Shari, you can think this is our standard, but still.
This is a standard. We did ask them, Stu, December 31st, for the Department of Audit, I did ask them if they can come earlier and start earlier so that we can make sure that we get this done well in advance before I leave.
Any questions for Shari about this?
Mayor, I'll just say I'm surprised that they didn't put some fine print in here that it's contingent on Treasurer Laura sticking around because of that highly productive working relationship. So I would not fight it if it did say that. By being the fine print.
Shari, you will be missed. If that message hasn't come across loud and clear already tonight, you will be missed. Okay, seeing no for the questions. I'll call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 All right, then that motion passes. Lastly, item L, appoint the City of Lander official voting delegate and alternate to WHAM Summer Convention Business Meeting, June 12, 2025. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Cox.
Who are we appointing, Mayor?
Yeah, so yeah, that's, yeah, so we need to find who who those folks are.
But we'd done that earlier.
Well, we're not sure who's attending the summer session. No, this is for the WHAM convention, so that's for the Wind River Visitors Council. So I'm not sure who who are the folks attending the summer convention?
Rochelle and I.
Regine.
And I haven't heard from any council members. We would love to have you join us for a lot of fun.
Yeah, I I would like to nominate Shari to be our voting member as her swan song of attending.
She's singing her whole offer here all by herself.
Make sure she's present for every vote instead of celebrating her.
Yep, exactly. Shari, would that be acceptable?
That's fine. I go off the board on WHAM also that month, so.
And then an alternate for that?
yourself, Clerk Fontaine?
We'd love you to. I think we need Yep, so I think we we need to amend that.
Uh, Mayor, I would offer the amendment that we appoint the City of Lander official voting delegate to be Treasurer Laura and the alternate to WHAM Summer, I'm sorry, and the alternate being Clerk Fontaine for the Summer Convention Business Meeting June 12, 2025.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, call for the question, starting with Councilmember Joshon.
Yes.
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 And that passes. Adam, do we need to then vote on the whole shebang again? Okay, so now we've approved the amendment, so can I just reiterate what Julia said? You said that so well.
As moved, as amended.
As amended. And can I get a second?
Second.
And call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 And that passes. Thank you, Shari and Rochelle for that. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn? So moved. How about a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Joshon. Call for the question, Councilmember Joshon.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. We will see you next Tuesday.